Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of December 13th, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. And it's over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to start by announcing that the Treasurer's Report for September and October 2018 is now available in the business office. And that moves us right to presentations.
Yes, and we have a speaker this evening?
Yes.
From EF High School Exchange.
Yes, thank you.
Where is?
There's a microphone over there if you don't mind.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. I'm the EF High School Exchange year Coordinator here in the local area in the Hudson Valley. And I'm so happy that this year we have three students placed at Putnam Valley High School. Supervising nine total in the area this year, so three are here in Putnam Valley. And we thank you for allowing them to come into community and stay with local host families and attend a local high school. In part, EF brings high school students over every year to stay with American host families and to participate in a high school year in America, to learn English, to integrate into this American culture and society, and to become part of an American teenage world. So through that, EF places 2,600 across America. And as a coordinator, I do my little bit in this corner of the world and supervise and place students with host families. So for September, we're still looking for host families. If anybody would like to host, please contact Pat Galfano. I can be contacted through the school's principal, and Trier knows how to get ahold of me. Also on Facebook. So I have now to present to you tonight a $200 referral check. It's one of three, I'm happy to say, I gave to the district this year. For referring host family, EF likes to give a little bonus, a little referral money. So I'm happy to do that at Putnam Valley. And this is the third $200 check this year, so I'll hand that over to you now.
I think this experience enriches our students' lives as well. And so it's really a-
It's been in the community, I've been with them 28 years, but it's been in Putnam Valley at least past 10 years. We've had students on and off over the years. And it's been very, very good for all the community students here and the student themselves when they take their good memories home and talk very well about the American culture they experienced. Thank you.
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 Thank you very much.
I can leave a few cards.
Yes, that would be great. And I do personally know some families that have had students that have maintained an eight- and 10-year relationship with a family. They've gone to visit there, the families come here.
It becomes an ongoing connection of the child around the world. So I have many overseas that have come back to visit me, and I've also gone to visit them and seen them over there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next subject is the district report card. Is that you, Dr. Luft?
We're just gonna watch the circle go around and around.
It's a long report card.
I can start. So, good evening. I'm here today to share some of our district school report card information, which will include both the 3- to 8 state testing, as well as Regents information. And I'll discuss a little bit about trends and some data analysis. The states undergo, or the federal government's undergone another tremendous change in accountability with ESSA. And a lot of that is really, we reviewed some today, and it's part of our admin meeting, and it's really in-depth, really complicated data and analysis, which would be very confusing. So what we tried to do was just to really highlight some of the, our test scores and really high-level information that would be easy for the community to understand, and obviously, the more detailed information is available on the state website. So, as the circle spins around and around. So just a quick look in at our demographics and enrollment. We haven't seen any drastic changes, although our kindergarten class was approximately 90 students. These numbers fluctuate, and this is based upon the Betsy enrollment. So this number could still fluctuate, but approximately 90 students were enrolled for the kindergarten year, and our total enrollment for, oh, sorry. And our total enrollment remains relatively similar to what it has in the past 1,646 students. So we do continue to see an increasing number of ENL students. That's something I wanted to highlight with nine of our kindergarten students representing ENL students. For our elementary school, looking at our ELA results, this trend continues from previous years. The orange line on the bottom is our opt-out, or our refusal rate. So that number continues to drop. Long as that number continues to drop, our performance continues to increase. So obviously, the more students that are taking the test, the better we're doing. But it's certainly also a testament to our administrators and our teachers, teaching the standards and making sure that our students are able to demonstrate their knowledge on these assessments. So you see here, both at ELA III and ELA IV, our test results continue to improve as our opt-outs continue to drop. The same holds true for math, third and fourth grade. We saw tremendous gain on third grade in math over the last year, again with another drop in refusals, as well as continued growth in fourth grade math. And I just wanted to jump into another report. This is a report that gives district-by-district comparisons. This one is third grade math. And I just wanted to highlight where we stand compared to some of the districts in the So you see there's some pretty powerful, big-name affluent school districts, both just above and below us. But that's really an impressive ranking for Putnam Valley when you compare it to previous years.
What's the criteria for that?
So this is based upon, this is the ranking of schools for third grade math for the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. So every school in Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. This is a screenshot. I didn't, there's obviously a lot more information, and I didn't want to share all the district's information. But I did want to provide a sense in terms of where we fell within the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs schools.
And I'd really like to just give a shout-out to Mick Coleman, one of our teachers who's taken a personal and professional role in studying the standards and sharing that information widely without teachers.
And deeply, without teachers. There's obviously a lot more information, and I want to share all the district's-
And in particular, something coming up that connects with this. Mick also is a very creative teacher, and he's been teaching the geometry standards, this is his second year, using Mondrian's artwork. Mondrian, who did a lot of work in geometric shapes. And an exhibit of our students' work, they've created their own Mondrian-appropriated paintings based on geometric analysis. That will be in our public library, in the Putnam Valley Public Library, and also in our town hall, coming up in January. We'll have more information out. But I want to emphasize that there is a creative link here, that it is, yes, we're teaching the standards, but there are many creative ways to do that. So that's really, this particular ranking reflects, I believe, this new approach to teaching the standards, that Mick has really led to a great extent.
Right.
Can I ask you one more time?
Of course.
So this was the ranking for last school year?
Yep, correct.
So that would be 2000-
So this is the 17, 18 school year data.
17, 18 school year in third and fourth grade math?
This is third grade specifically.
Third grade specifically, okay.
Both did very well.
Good, excellent.
That's an area of strength.
So jumping into fourth grade science, our students continue to do very well in fourth grade science. 96% of our students achieving proficiency on the fourth grade science exam. Onto the middle school. In ELA, again, the orange line represents our opt-out numbers, the blue line is our percentage of proficient students. The gray line is a cohort-to-cohort comparison. I'm not going to focus much on it, but this is how the cohort did the previous school year. So not as clear lines as the elementary school, but we do continue to see some growth in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade ELA. So all four grade levels increased their proficiency, while four grade levels decreased the number of students that were opting out, which is very impressive. The most substantial gain you may notice is in sixth grade ELA. There was obviously one outlier there in the 2017 school year, and we see the tremendous growth that was made from the 2000, between 2017 and 2018, and the level of proficiency. So that same report I showed you this time, last time, this is where Putnam Valley ranks compared to Putnam Northern Westchester school districts. And this is the sixth grade ELA ranking for how our students performed. And again, a testament to the hard work of the administrators and the teachers, and obviously, our students, in making sure that they put in the work necessary to achieve this level of proficiency. For math, this is fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. Now I want to point out the fact that eighth grade math had 25 students, so 25 of our top students took the high school-level algebra course. So that is part of the reason for our drop in proficiency in algebra. So prior to this year, it was growing, but this is the first year in several years in which we're removing that top 25% of the students to take algebra, so that, I believe, provides some insight into the drop from 17 to 18. But across the other three grade levels, we continue to see growth from 2017 to 2018. And if we dive into the 25 students who took the algebra Regents, you'll see that they did a fantastic job. In fact, all 25 students fell within Level 5, which is mastery. So all 25 students scored an 85 or higher on the high school algebra Regents in eighth grade. Questions about that one? So as the community may be aware, eighth grade students have an option between eighth grade science and, again, a high school earth science class, a Regents class. So we had 57 students take eighth grade science, and the proficiency rates are above, and you'll see that we rank above New York State. And then on the bottom, you'll see our results for the eighth grade students who took the Regents, the earth science Regents. 87 students took earth science in eighth grade, and our students performed extremely well with a 98% passing rate.
Dr. Luft, who, you said there are the two options. Who determines what student goes into what? Is there a matrix? Is it teacher recommendation?
It's open enrollment. The students decide, yes.
Okay.
Could you zoom in on the lower graph there? Because I'm trying to see how many Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 we have here.
Sure. So it's 1% Level 1, 1% Level 2. So a single student fell into each of those categories. 24% Level 3, and 74% of our students were in a Level 4. 98% overall between 3 and 4.
And what is the score to get into that? We had the largest amount get into the top level. What score gets you into the top level?
Level 4 is 85 or higher.
85 or higher. So we had the most students get 85 or higher?
Correct. So from the high school accountability, this is all based upon Regents exams. So this slide shows the 10 different Regents exams that are offered at the high school, everything from English, both social studies exams, math and science exams, and our student proficiency. So across the board, we, with one exception, rank higher than the state average on those I know in speaking with Ms. Trier, Dr. Trier now, that we're seeing some increases in some of our higher-level Regents courses in terms of enrollment. More students are challenging themselves and taking some of those higher-level courses. So that's something that's very, I know that the district has been focused on, is pushing students to continue with those advanced courses. So it's something that we were happy to see in terms of enrollment in those higher-level Regents courses. It's also becoming increasingly unusual for school districts to still offer all 10 exams. I'll show you later, I think for physics, we're one of only two school districts in Putnam County that still offers the physics Regents. The state has not yet released the graduation rate for the 2014 cohort, which would have been last year's graduates. So this is the most up-to-date information we have. It's a table with three different cohorts. So the 2011 cohort, which would be six years ago, they would have entered high school. 97% of those students have graduated over that time. The 2012 cohort, which would have entered ninth grade five years ago, 99.36% of those students have now graduated. And the 2013 cohort, which would have graduated at the end of 2017, is, their four-year cohort is 96% of those students have graduated. So we expect any time now to get the 2014 four-year cohort analysis, but the state has not yet released that to us. So just some high-level trends. We're continuing to see lower numbers of opt-outs. We're continuing to see higher numbers of Regents enrollments, especially in those advanced Regents courses. We're continuing to see improving 3- to 8 test scores, and we're still seeing an increasing level of diversity within our programs. And just some quick analysis for accountability. I know we get asked a lot about our school ranking on websites, specifically the website that's attached to Zillow for individuals who are looking for, to purchase homes. And historically, we don't feel as if our overall scores have represented the quality of a school district that we have. So I started to investigate a little further in terms of what were the factors that were driving the rating we were getting. So I wanted to highlight, really, the one major variable that the school district has the ability to influence is our test scores. So across all three buildings, you'll see, oop, sorry, cut off the top one. So at the top, the elementary school received a test score rating of 8 of 10, the middle school, 7 of 10, and the high school, 7 of 10. So those ratings represent how our students perform compared to all students across the state. And even though some of our overall building score numbers from this website, which we have no control over, are lower than we believe, I wanted to highlight the fact that the test scores, the piece that we have the most direct impact on, is certainly on the high end. I also want to point out the fact that they are very slow to refresh their data. This data is still based upon the 2016, 2017 school year. So as we just shared, all of our test scores have increased in the following year. Therefore, we expect these numbers to increase, to go even higher, once the website gets around to refreshing its data. So I was happy to see that at least the data of which we have the most control over is showing us in the light that we believe we are, and representing the quality of a school district that we know that we have. These are other screenshots and reports from School Meter, which shows our ranking across, in this case, Putnam County is the first one. So this is a snapshot for all 3 through 8 testing, ELA math and science, and our ranking compared to the total number of districts in Putnam County, which is 6. It's something that we look at, because we're very comparable to many of the districts in Putnam County. And you'll see, for a majority of these, we rank second or third. Anything that's in the green is an improvement from the previous year. So on the right-hand side, I know the color's not great here. Anything on the right-hand side with an arrow pointing up is an improvement in terms of ranking from the previous year.
So can I ask you on the science Regents, where we had really good scores, is it because our, the N is so small that one person changes the percentage significantly as opposed to maybe a Mayapack or somebody who has a larger school, and it takes more numbers for them to change the percentage? Because you showed us Regents, Science, 8, and we're number 5 of 6. I'm imagining that has a lot to do with the fact that, I think, was it two kids or three kids were ones and twos, and that each one of those kids represented more than 1%.
It's a great question. We had 87 students take the test. Our value was 97.7%, so almost rounding up to 98% of our students passed. I'm not sure how it's possible that we would rank 5 of 6. Whether they, I don't know how they deal with students who don't take that exam in eighth grade, or how that figures in. I guess it's possible that if some schools let less students take the exam, and really treat it like an honors program as opposed to an open enrollment program, that every student could pass, and therefore, those schools were all 100%. So it's possible, with 98% of our students passing, is certainly something we should be very proud of. But I'm willing to bet that many of those other schools, there's less students that attempt that exam. Because when you look at the combined science, so the last column takes into consideration both our performance on the Regents, as well as our performance on the state science assessment, for those who don't take the Regents. And you see there, when we look at all of our students, we rank first out of the six districts.
So you can make numbers say anything.
I know you don't have the answer, Jerian, but I'm just curious as to whether there is that open enrollment same policy about eighth grade, or I know many districts, there isn't a choice, everybody takes the Regents. I think that's becoming the trend. The fact that we had 60 or so not is a nice number, but I don't, I'm wondering, like, I like being ranked 1, but I'm wondering if other districts have less kids taking that eighth grade science.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know offhand, but it's certainly something that I can investigate. I know some school districts have gone earth science for all, some actually do living environment for all in eighth grade. We have had internally many conversations recently about which is the best direction for us to go. Do you look to increase our enrollment? Do we look to switch content areas and offer living environment? There's obviously factors in terms of teacher certifications and other things that impact our, what we can offer and when. But those are conversations that we're currently having. We don't have any anticipated changes for next school year, but certainly, I think throughout the rest of this school year, we'll be partaking in those conversations to decide which is the best pathway forward for our students. So this is our K through 8 rankings across the entire New York State. And again, just wanted to point out the areas in which there's an up arrow or green are areas in which we have moved up our percentile ranking across the state. So obviously, every student in the state takes the same exam. So we look at how student performance varied across the state. You'll see in many cases, our students continue to outperform other students across the state, which is why our ranking moved up. Just to highlight a few of them. For third grade math, the one I showed you before, our ranking for Putnam Northern Westchester, our ranking across all of New York State is the 93rd.8 percentile. And for sixth grade ELA, it's the 86th percentile for the two that I showed you our rankings. But if you want to see how that translates across the entire state, those are the numbers.
So those are all, I mean, when you look at some of the, some public sentiment and some of the things that they're saying about where our district ranks, they don't hold up to what our numbers are. They, I mean, they're, you know, when they're trying to disparage, you know, the quality or our performance, these numbers tell a different story.
Right. If you focus on the value, which is the percentage of students according to whatever the metrics the state plans on using this year, the percentage of students which the state considers to be proficient is certainly not a number that we would like. We would like that number to be higher. But when you look at how that number translates or compares to other schools across the state, in many cases, you realize that that number actually reflects that we're doing much better than many of our counterparts across the state. So I guess a good example is the sixth grade ELA example. 68.6% of our students, the state determined to be proficient. So it doesn't sound like a very high number, but then when you compare it to the state, that ranks us 93rd in New York State out of 691 schools, and puts us in the, almost the 87th percentile across the state. So the values in terms of the percentage of students that are proficient can be misleading, but this is a much better metric to show how we are doing compared to other school districts across the state, as well as across our region. So the same two reports for the Regents. This is our ranking across Putnam County for our Regents exams. In many cases, we did not change our ranking. You'll notice the totals vary. So as I pointed out before, physics were 1 of 2. So we're 50th percentile, but there's only two districts that are offering the physics Regents anymore, four that are offering chemistry. And then the same comparison across New York State, what our rankings are for our Regents exams across the state.
So what have the discussions been about, I mean, I remember us talking, I don't know if it was this year, last year, or the year before, they're kind of all blended in my brain, about the reason why we, reasoning behind having more Regents exams than some of other schools is that we didn't have something like an IB that was kind of, it was an imprimatur on the program. And Putnam Valley High School being a pretty young school district to have a high school, as far as that is concerned, needed for some students, or the idea that we needed to have these programs to show who we were, right? And others, probably what would call the U-Lader schools in Westchester, would not, because if you go to Scarsdale, you know, they have the reputation already when they're applying to colleges, that didn't really need that, because maybe they're taking AP or IB as opposed to having to take 3- to 8 exam. I'm just wondering, as we roll out IB and kind of that gets into the cycle, will some of the discussion go to, will we continue to offer those tests, or think about rearranging how that works?
Sure. I mean, that's a conversation I would say we have on a yearly basis. Certainly, Dr. Trier and myself have that conversation in terms of what do we want to offer, and we've involved the teachers in those conversations. In many cases, our teachers are committed to the exam, they like the accountability piece, they like that they have a target to work towards, and that helps guide their curriculum and their teaching. So we certainly, I have not witnessed a uproar from our teachers who don't want to offer the Regents curriculum and the Regents exam, so I think that's one of the variables that are at play. But it's certainly a yearly conversation, and if IB starts to assume the role of some of those higher-level Regents courses, and we could avoid double and triple testing students when possible, that's certainly something that I believe we would have another conversation about.
Because I wonder, and I'm sure, I know we've got this data, probably we each have the data, the number of juniors or some of the seniors that take physics. That would be a big question, too. Because a lot of the seniors just are not interested in moving forward with another Regents exam if they're not, if they're senior, they're taking physics, they might be taking AP as opposed to-
The Regents.
So this is just, as you mentioned, this is just the physics Regents. So 56 students took the exam, but this would not include, as you pointed out, any students that were enrolled in AP physics, because they would have taken the AP exam and not taken the Regents exam.
Didn't we at one point, I thought it was a big controversial conversation, have you had to take physics prior to us allowing you to take the AP physics class?
The cycle was different where it was requirement, I remember that.
We were doing some-
So that's, again, a conversation that's come up as we plan for the implementation of IB. We've had conversations, both as administrators and as, with it in the science department, about what is the correct pathway for students who want to push themselves, and, but at the same time, we don't want them necessarily to leave without any exposure to a subject area like physics. As a former physics major, I could- As a former physics major, I can certainly attest to the fact that my, having taken it in high school better prepared me for physics in college. But I hear both, I heard both as a physics teacher and as an administrator, that students who want to pursue careers in the sciences or math or engineering are, the expectation is that they take a physics course in high school. And when they enroll, even if physics is not their major, they're expected to take a college-level, one-on-one-level physics course their freshman year. And if they've never taken physics before, they're at a huge disadvantage. And I can speak to the fact that the high school physics curriculum is covered in probably the first five or six weeks of that physics one-on-one course and everything else becomes new learning anyway. So for students that never had exposure to that content are at a significant disadvantage to their peers. The other side of it is, is we don't want to prevent students from taking more rigorous courses from, there's certainly a financial piece associated with completing IB and AP courses and attempting to get the credits to carry over. So it's a very complicated issue, but it's certainly something that we're addressing.
Generally, in terms of the report card, it's the purpose, I would imagine, is for districts to use your data to inform choices, decisions, options. We have made, and under Dr. Will's leadership in the last five years, so many changes. We've put so many different programs in, so many different classes. How, I guess what I'm saying is, can we make sure we're really assessing what is being effective? What is not? You know, making assumptions, for example, years ago, the big assumption was class size makes all the difference in the world. And then we found that maybe that's not necessarily the case. So how can we use this, or I guess I'm saying, are you using this in a way that helps us make those decisions about what we offer, what curriculum changes we should make? Like third and fourth grade, we're doing something right. Do we know what that is?
Sure. And it certainly goes beyond myself or other administrators. It's really teams of teachers that are getting together to review this data. What we're sharing this evening is very high level, just in terms of proficiency. What teachers are looking at are individual students. Where did individual students get questions wrong? What standards were those associated with? How do we perform across the region in terms of how did our students do on specific standards compared to other standards? So there, there is a wealth of information that sort of is underneath what I'm sharing with you this evening. And our teachers gather as departments and as vertical teams to review those exams. In many cases, question by question, student by student, to see where are we excelling and where do we need more work. So that work has been going on for many years and will continue. So certainly, we're using the data to our advantage. We're using anything we can to help inform and drive our instruction. And this is just one of many measures that our teachers use. As you know, we have benchmark assessments and adaptive assessments and formative assessments and all the other kinds of assessments. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. All right. And Maureen, you may be up. The next is a revision to policy number zero one one zero, workplace sexual harassment.
So there's, there's two things that we're going to present tonight on sexual harassment. Basically, our policy itself hasn't changed and our reporting procedures have not changed. What is changing is New York State in the eleventh hour came out and included certain groups of employees, like substitute teachers or contracted employees to be covered under our policy. So this new policy includes those, those people. And it also separates out students and Title IX under sexual harassment. So we'll have two different policies. One is for employees, all employees, and the training that is required. And we're looking into different options. I've done some level of training. I did a lot of the informational portions of the training. A lot of the training now has to include examples, really interactive training. So we're trying to decide on how we're going to roll a lot of those training opportunities out for all of our faculty and staff, which is, which is a big job. And then the second part is for students, really just separating it out and, and helping students in classes really understand terms like consent, what it, what it really means to be harassing and being aware of, of how we interact with others in, in terms of sexual harassment. So, you know, again, this came out of the Me Too movement. And I think they're great policies. It's just now really moving forward in the training and implementation of our policies. So the board, school boards recommends both of these policies. Our attorneys also recommend using NISBA's policies because they were well-vetted. So I, I don't really recommend any changes at all.
As you said, there are very few changes from our existing policy, just who is covered.
Under the workplace policy, it's really about who is included in that mandated training. Okay.
Natalie, is this a, you get trained once or is this a yearly?
It's annually. So we are looking into different programs. Initially, New York State said it has to be in person, so the trainer had to be in person. That can still take forms in different ways. You can do a lot of this training online still with some online programs, but, but we're looking at different options. Again, with, you know, we're a small enough district, but yet it's still a lot of individuals. And if people are out that day, then follow-up, so it's just figuring out all of the logistics.
Well, and twelve pages of regulation is a lot to absorb. I mean, as I was going through, it's a lot to absorb. I don't think it's something even that you could absorb sitting in one training session.
It's not. It, it really needs to be over multiple trainings and multiple years. And really, it's about culture and the culture we strive to, to have. And making sure that if, when people feel uncomfortable, when people suspect something, that they, that they know who to go to, how to handle it, and that they feel safe reporting things if things come up. And I think that's what we want for our students too. And we really want our students, especially our high school students, understanding that once they leave here in Putnam Valley, how, how to understand what sexual harassment is and isn't. So, and then the next policy I'm recommending that the board consider, this is the first reading, a sick leave utilization policy. Basically, this policy really doesn't allow one person in the district. It really sets policy and guidance for the district to follow on what is considered excessive absences for the purposes of sick leave. It excludes people who are known to be sick, who, who file for, under the Family Medical Leave Act or who have proper documentation. So it really excludes those people. We want to be an organization who understands and who supports people during times of illness or, or immediate family illness. But we, we felt that along with our student attendance, the attention to our student attendance, we felt that we, we wanted you to consider bringing a sick leave policy and really understand and define for us what is excessive in terms of sick, sick leave. And really, this states for tenured employees or permanent employees, that ten or more per year would be considered excessive. Six or more for non-tended employees excessive. I think it's reasonable. And I think that it really takes it out of, it, it makes it so that things are not arbitrary. That there's a, a true practice throughout the district on what we consider excessive.
And is, do we, is that a conflict or a problem, given that our contracts allow people paid sick time in excess of those numbers?
No, because sick time is really, is available if, with proper documentation. But when you have excessive absences, you know, sick time is there. It doesn't mean you can use it when you're not sick or if you're, it, it just really puts a limit on how much you can use every year without, without it being excessive. It really, you know, again, proper documentation, the contracts, the contracts are different for our different bargaining units. But we follow our contracts and ask for medical notes after three consecutive days or four consecutive days, depending on the bargaining unit. But again, sick days are really there, you know, in case of an emergency and we want to keep an eye on that. And also, I think it really ties in nicely with the new state expectations under ESSA. They really are, teacher attendance, correct, is going to be considered on our ratings as well. So that was another reason why we just, we wanted to put this forth.
Well, and it, to me, it, it says that our, our culture values the teacher in the classroom and we are unhappy when they are not there because we value their, their work in the classroom.
Exactly. Agreed. And we do not have, I really want to make that clear as well. We do not have what I would consider really an excessive absenteeism issue. But yet, we do, the important part with having a policy set is that it's just not arbitrary. It really is consistent and sends a message and allows, allows consistent practices to be built. And, and really is based on value.
There's also, you know, we already know that staff development takes a toll on teacher presence in the classroom as it is. So.
Agreed. And if we want, you know, to have those continued opportunities, you know, both, you know, attendance for sick leave and professional development can, can be conflicting. So we want to be able to continue to offer that to teachers.
Great. This is the first reading, so we will read it again at our next board meeting with any changes. Okay. I guess, Dr. Luft, you're up again. We're into reports. We have.
There is a student report.
Oh, there is a student report? Oh, so sorry. I made an assumption. That's terrible. We'll read our student reports.
This is a report from Sonia Garcia. She's sorry she wasn't able to be here tonight. She wanted to report that there was a foreign language induction at the high school on December fourth. Students would be inducted into the, either the Spanish Honor Society or the French Honor Society. And she said it was wonderful to see students so interested in language and willing to learn more than one language. The one act play competition, there was a writing competition where students in the high school were able to create a one act play which was due on December seventh. When the winners are announced, there'll be a first, second, and third place winner. And the winners will be awarded $300, second place $200, and third place will be $100. The winner will also be able to perform their play in the library. It was a great competition that allowed people to show their creative side. She reported on the memory project. In art club, students are continuing with their memory projects. The art club members received a picture of multiple children who aren't accepted in their country. They then recreate the picture using whatever form of art they choose, such as regular stencils, watercolor, and even acrylics. They then send the picture back to the address that it was sent from. The National Honor Society hosted a toy drive for the children at Maria Ferrari's Children's Hospital. Nine boxes full of toys were donated and it was a huge success. The toys were delivered to the hospital and the workers were very grateful. They said the toys would be utilized for Christmas, children's birthdays, and for the playroom. The interact club held a pajama drive for the Putnam Valley Food Pantry. Anyone in the school could donate a new pair of pajamas for any age group by placing them in a drop-off box in the main office. There were very many donations, which is highly appreciated. The pajamas were sorted today. However, the club will still accept offers if dropped off by tomorrow. And that's it.
I really do love the commitment to community service that our district has among our clubs, our student choice. It's great. Okay. There is no PTA, PTSA, so now Dr. Luft.
Sure. Be nice and quick. So I just wanted to highlight, I was invited into one of our middle school classrooms. We have a new encore class this year, which is capstone projects. And students identify a topic of research that is of interest to them. And then they learn research skills and ultimately create a presentation sharing some of the research. And I was invited in to listen to some of the student presentations. And they were on very timely topics. They were talking about the lunch program and offerings at the middle school compared to the high school, for example. And as we know, that was something we were hoping to address through our facilities project as well as homework. I think I might have been set up for the homework piece. So during sort of the question and answer class discussion to follow, I might have lost to a room full of middle school students who do not like homework. But it was really impressive to see the amount of research and thought that went into the students. You could tell some students were not comfortable getting up and speaking before in, in a room in front of their peers, but everyone was expected to and, and held to that. And that's part of the class is to teach students those skills. So I was very happy to see that a class in its first year was as successful as it was. And I hope that students will continue with their projects. It is a two-year course, so students will have the opportunity to pick back up where they left off in their eighth grade year in the capstone encore as well. So I'm looking forward to see what the students came up with next. And part of the feedback we gave was giving them sort of new items to explore, new ways to think about the problem which they're already researching. So we hope they'll continue with that. I was able to attend the Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSI's social emotional learning conference to watch some of our, Putnam Valley's finest present on all of the SEL programs that we are incorporating here in Putnam Valley. So it was really exciting to see. There was a huge turnout in the room. Many people signed up for the sessions. And I'm sure Dr. Will's can speak more to the actual content of that presentation. I don't want to steal her glory because she was one of the presenters. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, Dr. Will's, Ms. Dordia and myself have been covering over at the middle school as we await the arrival of Kern on Monday. I'm happy Kern will be here on Monday. But it really has been an eye-opening experience. I've enjoyed the time in the building. It's been great to be able to stop into classrooms. I now have a, some seeds that are growing in a test tube filled with the inside of diapers, which is apparently holds water very well. And, because I sat at a table and they made me do the, the lab with them. So it's been a great experience. It's been great to be in the building. And I hope to continue visiting the classrooms. And I'm still looking forward to Kern coming to deal with the other stuff. And then I just wanted to mention that a group of us went to visit Warwick. Warwick has a tremendous program around sustainability at their school district. It's really part of the culture of their community. And this has certainly been embraced within their school district. So a group of teachers from our sustainability committee went over to visit. We saw, we met in a conference room with the district office and then visited the high school ironically during their unit lunch. So the host started telling us about the unit lunch and all the great things that they do and why they did it. And I had to interrupt him and say, yeah, yeah, we already do that. And then we visited the middle school as well as one of their elementary schools. So I was happy that many of the initiatives in which they undertook, we have as well. So they were talking about many things that we already do, which, which felt good. Outdoor classrooms, bottle filling stations, other things like that. They certainly have a leg up. I think they have like a seventy-acre solar farm, which generates all of the electricity they use in all of their buildings. They have, I'm going to make up a number because I don't remember it, thousands of acres of property between all their different buildings, which was pretty impressive, certainly not something that we. uh, between all their different buildings, which was pretty impressive, certainly not something that we have. But we came back with some good ideas and some ways we want to continue to explore sustainability here in Putnam Valley. And, but at the same time, we came back feeling a little reassured that we've, a little accomplished in everything that we've already been able to do with an initiative in a short period of time. Thank you.
Jeremy, how long is the encore class for the capstone project? Is it a quarter or?
No, it's less than a quarter. They go through, it's been, yeah.
Seven weeks?
Something like that, they have five rotations in seventh and eighth grade, I believe. Six rotations, so it's a little bit shorter than the other grade levels. I might have that backwards, but five or six rotations at each grade level, so they're a little shorter than a quarter each.
Dr. Wills?
All right. Um, you know, this, this has been quite a, a time of, uh, a lot of action in the community. And I, I'd like to start by just thanking the community for their support of our, uh, our proposal, our facilities proposal and, um, for, uh, you know, supporting the, the future of our schools and our students. And this is the long-term look at, um, who we are as a school district. As you heard this evening, there's much that is going on in terms of our academics, um, and our social emotional learning. I recently saw an article that was sent to me by, um, Mr. Burrow that talked about some of the things that we discussed uh, in terms of the health and wellness center, that in fact, exercise and movement are the keys to social emotional health. Um, this is, this evidence by, uh, of research which has definitely supported that, um, that factor that we discussed. So many thanks to the community. Um, also I wanted to, to mention that, um, our high school principal just received her doctorate. And I want to thank the PTSA. And particularly also I wanted to thank Dr. Amin, um, and Dr. Deeb, who were very involved in these, uh, in the program that we had here, the brunch, uh, we had, uh, to honor, uh, Dr. Entieri. In her work, which covered, her, her research was on later start time. And of course, that's one of the things we accomplished this year. And, uh, you know, last year we were talking about, could this happen? Could we really do it? Could the traffic be managed and so on? Now people have already put that in the back burner and, you know, we're doing it. And it was, um, quite, quite a monumental task. But there's so much teamwork here in the community, um, in our larger community, but also in our staff community, um, to accomplish these goals. And I think every time we are able to do that, we reinforce the sense of our own ability and our capacity to, to make change and to move our s- school district ahead. The, uh, presentation at BOSI's that, um, Dr. Luft mentioned was one where we, um, were asked if we would contribute a program to the social emotional learning conference. And we had representative, we had Sue Boyd from our elementary school, we had, with Margaret, the Margaret Podesta, uh, principal. And we had Maria Belfont, um, from our, uh, middle school. And we had Dr. Entieri talking about our, uh, high school initiatives. And, um, it was impressive. We talked, uh, at the elementary school, we talked a lot about kids of character, which is a, a long-term program and the kinds of things they did with that program. Plus, we talked about the new ruler program and how that was being used. And, um, also the new sensory room that we have at our elementary school for students who are, have problems controlling their anger. And, um, we have a new place for them there with, uh, some grant help from the foundation to create that. Uh, at the middle school, they talked about how ruler has been implemented quite widely there. And, um, at the high school, we talked about the unit lunch and other activities that are done to broaden our students' ability to express themselves. Uh, and one of the aspects of unit lunch takes part right, uh, takes place right here in this, which is now a performance space in our library. Um, they have a wonderful open mic during unit lunch where students can, um, read their poetry, sing, um, uh, and participate in a number of activities. We had, for example, African drumming here. It was packed, the library was packed with students watching their peers. This is what builds a sense of confidence, a sense of belief in the larger community and it is very effective. So, um, I was so glad that the one act play contest was mentioned by our student representative because we had 16 entries, which is quite remarkable to this contest. And, um, I, you know, I have to say that I've read the plays, they were all read blind without, you know, who read them and who, who wrote the plays. And, you know, the subjects vary. One of them that I have to mention, because I think it was so exciting, that one of the classes in social studies wrote a play. The class wrote a play and submitted it on Andrew Jackson, on the President Jackson, uh, who was a very controversial figure in our history. And what it demonstrated, the play itself demonstrated one of the significant factors in playwriting, which is basically you're struggling with a problem. You're struggling with, whether it's a problem of the human nature, uh, a problem of history. How do we solve the problem? And it, these students were taking up the problem. In this case, it's a historical problem of a, of a president who did a great deal of, you know, to, uh, develop economics in the, in the, uh, at that time, but also was responsible for the Trail of Tears, for a terrible, um, destruction of the Cherokee Nation. So, you know, how do you put these things together? And these are the struggles that, um, our students face in the history classes. And it was wonderful to see that this teacher, Sean Gilroy, had engaged the students in this way. So that's the excitement of, um, our educational process, uh, that we can see taking place in, in the library. Because we will have these performances in our library of the, uh, the winning plays. And that will be in Jan-, in, uh, January with, I'm sorry, February, February 6th, I believe it is. We'll get more information out, but it's, I think it's early February, that we will have our performances right here for community members who want to come. Uh, again, I mentioned the, uh, math exhibit earlier, but the math and art, uh, connection and teachers who are dedicated to, um, showing the community what our students can do. Uh, also, um, just mention of our athletic teams doing well, our basketball teams are, are doing well. All of our, uh, teams, uh, both boys and girls. Uh, I wanted to mention the bilingual seal of literacy. Uh, New York State has, um, come up with a new, a feature for a diploma that a student can receive to distinguish themselves. And this one is particularly, I think, promising for students who come to this country speaking, do not speak, uh, English and who learn English, speak English fluently. They have to be tested to show, they have to show that they can be proficient in, uh, the second language. And this can also be for students who are studying world languages.
Exactly.
So it's, it's for all students.
For all students.
To have that opportunity. So this year, we probably will have one student who, who will hopefully receive this bilingual seal. And it would go on their diploma. And it recognizes the fact that language is so significant today in, in the kind of world we live in where, um, we have this, this international, um, need for international communication. And we're offering, uh, French, we're offering Spanish, we're also offering our Mandarin program. And we have students who come here who speak Spanish. We mentioned, uh, Dr. Luft mentioned that we have seven new, uh, in our kindergarten, seven new ENL, English as a new language, just to make sure, um, everyone understands, English as a new language. They come here and we are trying to, our teachers are working with students and helping them to reach standards when they themselves have come here with almost no English. So it's a, it's a mighty task that our teachers are asked to perform and again, wonderful, um, opportunities. Last night at the middle school holiday concert, uh, the chorus concert, um, Jim Witt was here, you know, of the meteorological fame. And he was signing calendars and, uh, these calendars, which are really wonderful Putnam County, beautiful photographs, but also predictions of the weather based on science. He was signing them and those calendars are used to fund program we have here at the, the middle school for academic booster lab after school. So it was really a nice, um, it was nice to have him here, for people to meet him, know him from the radio and, uh, know that this is supporting our program. We've had some wonderful kindergarten and first grade holiday concerts at our schools. And, um, with that, I also, you know, we will be welc- welcoming, as Dr. Luft mentioned, welcoming Dr. Mojica on Monday. All of us will be very glad, uh, to have him here. And noting that students feel the loss of their assistant principal, the person they had for a couple of years here and made relationship with. So this is a new start for many of them, uh, in that process. And I want to thank, um, Dr. Luft and, uh, Ms. Doherty for really being so willing to commit themselves to this whole new world that we, uh, we experienced. We were all there and learned a lot. And, and, uh, Dr. McCar-, uh, Mr. McCarthy was also grateful for the assistance and very positive. Again, we have a family here, we have a team. And this is the way we demonstrate that, when we all work together. Not every school district would have that kind of teamwork that we saw. I also want to, um, wish our, uh, community a wonderful holiday, um, and happy new year. We won't be seeing them until after the new year. And a safe one and a happy one with their families.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for a public comment. And moving on then to new business. Starting with, Mr. Number one, Mr. Ferrer.
Resolved by the Board of Education to accept the final vote tally for the proposition vote on December 4th, 2018 as follows. Facilities project proposition, yes, 775, no, 644.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Raymond Renzo to a probationary appointment of head custodian effective December 30th, 2018, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, that's February 24th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, it's December 30th, 2019, at the elementary school campus on step five of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Doesn't want to go to number three, hold on.
Uh, resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Georgine Bagnato to a probationary appointment of bus monitor effective December 14th, 2018, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, February 8th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, December 13th, 2019, at the transportation department on step five of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Carolyn Alfano to a probationary appointment of bus driver effective January 2nd, 2019, with a minimal probationary period of eight weeks, February 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, January 1st, 2020, at the transportation department on step five of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? We're always happy to hire bus drivers? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the following staff members for an additional assignment, one period each, to cover the classes of a teacher out on medical leave effective on or about December 7th, 2018, for a duration of one to two weeks. Joe Mahoney, Bob Baker, Liz Rosano, Kerry Sullivan and Ryan Odell.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Anne Marie Barry, a school monitor from the district effective June 30th, 2019, as per document number 86 slash 19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Christina Nadrew, a school monitor from the district, effective December 3rd, 2018, as per document 87 slash 19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Be resolved that the Board hereby terminates the employment of employee number 12132018310 effective December 13th, 2018, in accordance with the provisions of section 71 of the Civil Service Law, with the opportunity to be reinstated to the same or similar position if a vacancy exists upon making application, therefore, within one year after termination of the disability.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Stefan Nemeczek, or Steven Nemeczek, to the position of testing accommodation coordinator effective Monday, December 17th, 2018, with stipend of $1,500.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is for the, um, state exams.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District establishes the attached document, document number 82 slash 19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting as standard workdays for appointed officials and will report the day's work to the New York State and local employees retirement system based on the timekeeping system records maintained for the 2018-19 school year.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the first reading of the revised policy 0110, sexual harassment in the workplace as per document number 84 slash 19. Policy 0111, student title nine sexual harassment as per document number 85 slash 19. And policy 9001, sick leave utilization as per document number 92 slash 19. Documents attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12.
Resolved to approve and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a memorandum or understanding with the College of New Rochelle Graduate School for teachers participating in the reset grant through June 30th, 2021, as per document 88 slash 19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
So.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Reset stands for Rigors for Education Success for ELL students through their teachers. And they will supply supporting staff for our staff.
Yes, it, it, they actually, this is part of a Department of Education federal grant that New Rochelle, College of New Rochelle has to, to basically support, subsidize, uh, completely, um, the, um, coursework needed to obtain a certification in the, uh, field of, uh, TESOL, which is the same as, uh, teacher of English, uh, students, uh, with English as a new language. The value here for the district is significant as the, um, requirements now for the time, um, that, uh, we need to spend with students, um, uh, who have English, uh, who are, for whom English is a new language, um, have significantly increased with this Part 154 regulation. By having teachers who are general ed teachers also having the TESOL, uh, certification, those students can be placed in a classroom and receive much of that time in an integrated classroom. So many school districts are trying to figure out how to have stu- teachers certified for that purpose. And this is one that we thought we would try to take advantage of if, you know, it's voluntary on the part of, of teachers. And we hope that some of our teachers will, you know, in fact, take part in this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13.
Whereas the Board of Education, the Putnam Valley Central School District hereafter referred to as the district, desires to enter into a five-year service contract with the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services hereafter referred to as Southwest BOSI's. Pursuant to education law 1954 double J in order for the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, the LH RIC. the L H RIC, to furnish certain services to the district, including, not, including, not limited to, network printing services in COSER 6360 and/or COSER 7710. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education of the District agrees to a multi-year contract with Southwest Bosie's for, was it, sorry, yeah, for the provision of said services to the district at a cost not to exceed over the term of the agreement, $354,912 plus yearly RIC support during the term of this contract attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting as document number 9119. This amount may be amended with the approval of both parties. Payments will be made as part of the regular annual Bosie's contract for services to Superintendent of Schools or designees hereby authorized to approve the final terms of the contract and to execute on behalf of the district all documents necessary or appropriate to carry out the intent of this resolution.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through thirteen, as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're appointing a volunteer cheerleading coach, and we'd like to thank Christine Stanionis, and I apologize for mispronouncing her name, who volunteered to be our cheerleading coach. We're approving two additional workers who worked at our vote on the fourth. We're approving Ashley Bennett, who accompanies our middle school concerts. We're approving payment to three, to three staff members who conducted teacher workshops. And you heard about the one about Mick Coleman, and this is similar to that. We're approving days without pay for one staff member. We're doing some budget transfers. We're transferring money to allow us to rent a snow pusher to help with the maintenance. We're transferring money to cut and prepare the roof for an exhaust fan. And we're transferring money to cover the cost of the I B Professional Development Program. We're approving a health and welfare contract with the Dobbs Ferry School District for two of our students who attend non-public schools in their district to provide health and welfare services. We're approving a change order for the E P C product, which is the window replacement at the elementary school, et cetera. The change order discusses lump sum, lump sum upfront payments plus two different shipments for us to receive things and things along those lines. We're adjusting in-service credits that we previously approved for two employees. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving C S E, C P S E placements. And we're accepting a very generous donation of $200 from the E F High School Exchange Year Program to be used at our elementary school, is what we heard about in the beginning from that lovely lady.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open it up to public comment or anything from any member of the Board?
A couple of things. One, I was at the seventh and eighth grade chorus concert the other night. Very, you know, they just, it is always amazing to listen to our students. But I have to say, the very last song of the night, Mrs. Cron had, had both the seventh and eighth grade chorus together do an a cappella number. They had never sung together before. The seventh graders had practiced their part. The eighth graders had practiced their part. So they did a little disclaimer in the beginning. But I thought, you know, we ask children to take risks all the time. But what a perfect model of, well, we're going to try this. This is going to be challenging, but we're going to try this. And so I just, I thought that was, you know, significant in terms of the risk that you take. When you, you know, like, you want all your students to be perfect and you don't know how it's going to turn out. So I thought that was great. The first grade concert today was one of those, like, you had to have tissues. I mean, they were just so cute. They were just really cute. And you could see them as seventh and eighth graders. I mean, you can just see them bigger, you know?
And not as cute.
Well, I don't know, a different kind of.
A different kind of cute.
The class of 2030, right?
Yeah, 2030, it's a little scary. The other thing, today I did a webinar on legislative priorities, which always just makes my eyes roll back in my head. Except, except, they talked a lot about, NISBA's going to fight for the foundation aid to come back, which is great. I know Jill will be thrilled if that happens. And they really feel that with the new, the new legislatures in Albany, that this may be the right time. So they're talking about a three-year window in which all the foundation aid will be replaced. In addition, one of the things they're, they're fighting for is to make school health facility space building aid eligible. Another really thing that would be great for Putnam Valley, especially since we're talking about this new Health and Wellness Center and making more of that building aidable. They did say, wait a minute, let me find it here. They did say that one of the things districts should do for advocacy is to appoint, for local boards of education to appoint an advocacy liaison to participate in things like the National Advocacy Institute, which is a two-day institute in, with federal and state officials. And then the NISBA Capitol Conference in February. So I don't know if it's something we want to think about or talk about, whether we think it's important. I think if we don't advocate for ourselves, I mean, we can trust that somebody else is going to advocate for us, but I, but I don't know if that's what we want to do. So I haven't talked to my husband about this. He's not watching, so it's fine.
I volunteer for him.
So, I mean, I, both of these things, I think, are in Albany. One is three days, one is two days. But I do think that, that maybe that's something we haven't done for a while and that if we can, especially at this kind of cusp time, both for us and for the new state legislature, that it might be a good time to do it, so.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yes. Anyway, so, it was interesting. My, those earbuds hurt my ears, though. I can't stand listening to them.
And it is a droning-on voice sometimes.
No, actually, they were really pretty good. But it's just all the laws, they're so, can be so complicated, you know?
It's getting more and worse, so.
And all the things to advocate, that they're advocating for. But they're the things that we talked about at the conference in the summer, and they're the things that, you know, school board should be advocating for, so. Anyway, I would be willing to do it, I speak to my husband. But I, I don't know if, I don't know if that's a formal position. Like, I don't know how that works, this, that, you know, that they said the board should appoint an advocacy liaison.
So why don't we look into it? And it may have to be a resolution in the future.
Yeah, it's a resolution. We just make a resolution, and that means she'll be our primary or whoever is the primary contact.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I had two questions, probably neither of which, well, one question, really. Neither of which probably can be answered.
Give it a try, Mr. Fur.
Well, I read an article that Somers came to visit, I guess, to see our block schedule and our unit lunch. I read that in a paper, I don't remember which paper it was. But what they were talking about was what we were talking about when we were originally going to block was also rotating at the same time as going to block. And the reason we couldn't rotate when we went to block last year was because we didn't have an even schedule, where we didn't have a community lunch. I just wonder if we're going to be looking at exploring that so that first period isn't always first period. And it's, and you know, and since we have that community lunch where stuff can flip. I know that the issue is always, I think, with Bosie's when we look at that stuff.
It is.
I just wonder if we were going to examine that as, as an option again. I think, you know, it's just, I think, yet another layer of keeping attendance in a better place by, by changing it so it's not always, you know, a two-hour delay or whatever's going to be indulgent and always affect those earlier times. So just, I wanted to put that back on the radar. And, and then, just as a coincidence, I have, right after the holidays, I have an organizational retreat day that, for my company, for social emotional learning for our teams. So, you know, this is, I work for a nonprofit, nonprofit medical research institution that has over 2,000 employees and very progressive in, in a lot of our staff development. And I work mostly in communications with donors and that type of thing. So I'm always working cross-functionally at other teams, where I don't have any, I don't have any official power or influence other than the person communicating. So it's very important that we look at that. It's just sort of interesting that it's creeping its way definitely into.
It's prevalent everywhere.
Yeah, not just in the educational field.
Absolutely. Then I'm, I'm not sure if I heard you mention it, but I don't think we've had a board meeting. I wanted to thank all of our staff that participated in the variety show, which I think was just two weeks ago. I think we, when we look at the school report card and everything, I think we sometimes take for granted how much is so special here in Putnam Valley. And for teachers to continually, year after year, donate their time on a Friday evening to put themselves out there, take those risks, make people laugh, make people wonder at their talent, combination of both. I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Jerry Corwin. This was his last one, and he was the driving force. And it is very appreciated by all who do attend, without a doubt.
And the monies that are raised head toward the programs for the students who might not be able to afford instrument rentals or programs that they put on for the music department. So it's a great, great thing for the, for the students to benefit from. It's a lot of fun for everybody.
Well, and that leads me to thank the Putnam Valley Music Association, which really has taken that, I don't think there's, there's an accident in the last 10 or 15 years since their existence that our numbers in band and orchestra in fourth grade have increased. And I think it's because there was always that, how do kids get instruments if they can't afford it? And they've really helped that. So not to mention just keeping music education in the forefront, so. Congratulations, everybody involved. Anything else? Okay. At which time then, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, after which no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to say once again to wish everybody a happy holiday, a restful December break, and a Happy New Year.